I'd like to call this meeting our working session to order. Today is January 7, 2020. First of all, any changes to the agenda?
We did have one change to the agenda. We added overnight and out of state field trips. That was the only change.
Okay, thank you. The next item is dedicated to our community. We are going to have the election of a chairperson and election of a vice chairperson. That being said, do you hear nomination?
I will make a motion for chair for Mr. Jeff Dickerson.
Do you hear a second? I will second that. Okay. I have a motion made by Mr. Damon Jackey to have Jeff Dickerson as our chairperson, and second by Ms. Rebecca Dyke. All in favor? All opposed? Oh, she can't hear about her about that day. Okay, Mr. Dickerson, it's all yours.
So soon.
I will give you the gals. Please pass that down please.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the best of interest in my capacity. Next will be what?
Vice Chairperson.
Now you have the last vice chair.
I demonstrate here.
I make a motion to elect Diane Breeding as our vice chair.
It's not my turn.
Yes, it is.
No way.
Don't argue. Motion is on the go.
I said no. I decline.
Yeah, you probably didn't catch that. I think Ms. Dyke had indicated with her the acquisition by someone else.
I can barely do what I need to do now to do what I said I would do when I signed up to do this, and so taking on anything else, I think, is disingenuous to you all and to everybody else. And so I went through and I read, and nowhere does it say I have to. It just says that's the way it was. Well, we've been doing everything different, so I don't see any reason not to just make this one more thing we do a little different. And Jeff so graciously said that he would go ahead and step up and kind of bypass me, so.
Sure.
I am absolutely 110% positive. My plate runs over.
Okay. Plate run over.
So there was already a motion?
Already a motion.
You want a second?
Sorry.
Is that why I remember Ms. Breeding saying much in her?
You have the right to make or second any motion, so.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Uh.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I'm a 3B fiscal year 2019 audit reporter.
Well, I'm not actually going to stay up here and talk. Jason has actually been coming and doing the audit for us to go over last year's data with you.
It's my first working session with you all. Again, thank you all for having Stiles and Carter perform your fiscal year 19 financial statement audit. We're going to go over very high level review. If anybody has any questions, wants more details, just let me know. Just going to touch on some highlights here. With that, I think you all have a copy. I will say this year, everything went smoothly as in prior years. Page one of the copy, you'll see our report, our letterhead there, independent audit report spells out our report on financial statements, bureaus, management responsibilities, and then our responsibility. On the second page, this is where we give our opinion. And our opinion that financial statements present fairly in material respects are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, which is an unmodified, clean opinion. With that, I'll turn to the first financial statement. On page 10 is where your financial statements begin. This is your statement of net position. All the assets, long-term, short-term, and long-term and short-term liabilities of the district. It's in that total column. We've got total assets of $100 million, deferred outflows, which are similar to assets, those of 7.2 billion, less liabilities of 90.8 million, for an inflow, which are similar to liabilities of 2.6 million, for a net residual net position of 13.9 million for the district. And again, as in prior years, under those non-current liabilities, you'll see that the largest items there, obviously your bond obligations, 54 million in the long-term portion, but the net pension liability for SIRS of 15 million, the net OPEB liability for SIRS, which is the other post-appointment benefit obligations, of 4.4 billion, and that OPEB liability for TRS is 11.4 billion. So those are, again, those items we've discussed in the prior years that I believe in 2015 it began to be put on your financial statements. I have some more trend information on that shortly here. So on page 12, this is your balance sheet. A little more familiar with what you're used to seeing in your balance sheet in the FBR monthly. You see the general fund at 3.6 million in cash, another 1.7 million investments, and other governmental funds at 1.8 million and 1.1 million for a total of 6.5, 6 million in cash equivalents at June 30, 2019. The general fund, total assets of 5.7 million, less liabilities of 460,000, such a net fund balance of 5.29 million at fiscal year end. Page 14 shows the details of how that fund balance changed for the year. Total revenues in the general fund of 43.5 million, total expenditures of 42.1 million, for an increase in fund balance of 1.85 million. The fund balance of the general fund went from 3.4 to 5.3 during the fiscal year. Onto the notes on page 34, it's going to highlight your bonds, your total bonds for the district. At the prior fiscal year end, they were 63.3 million. Regularly scheduled payments of 4.2 million brought that down to 59.1 million at the end of fiscal year 19. Moving on a little more on these pension obligations. On page 58, you see a table here, and how this table has grown since this standard was implemented in 2015. You see trend information for each year there. On the second line down for the SIRS portion, the net pension liability, at 2015, 630 to the 15, it was measured at 8.2 million, and you can see how that's grown each year to where it's now 15.1 million. It went from 8.2 to 10.7, 11.9, 14.4 now. At June 30, 2019, measured at 15.1 million. For the TRS portion, you are in special funding situation where you don't record a portion of that since the state is 100% on the hook for that, is the way that's accounted for, but it's still, we present their liability of 122 million. This is your proportion of shares, their report, but you don't technically record any of your financial statements. It's just provided by TRS actuaries to show the proportion of those county districts would be of the total. And that went from 122 million, last year was up to 168, went down to 84 million for this year. And that is a thing where they've changed the discount rate is all that happened for the most part, the why that decreased. So it didn't have any impact on your offensive statements, but it does make that disclosure look a little different, but the discount rate has been up over what it was, like 3.6 to 7.5. Just actuarial assumptions have changed that. Page 59, this is what you actually pay in. So for SIRS, you see, this is where you all are filling this, the impact of this. So in 2015, you remain at 740,000 for SIRS pension, and that's increased to 997,000 for this prior fiscal year 19.
Notice the jump last year was over 100,000. This year is expected to be more. Is it going to be more?
Yes, rates are continuing to go increase. And page 78 is our summary of our audit results. It's a one-page summary of all of our reporting on Bureau's financial statements. You can see there, financial statements, we noted no material weaknesses, no financial reporting, no significant deficiencies, and no non-compliance that would be material to the financial statement. As far as the federal awards for all your federal programs, we noted no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, or any material non-compliance for major programs. So no items are findings yet. Anyone have any questions? Sounds a lot to get through, so obviously, reviewing this, going through this later, if you have questions, feel free to let me know.
Remind me what OPDBs, any four?
Other post-appointment benefit, so it's the health and life insurance for retirement culture article.
Now, there'll be a test for board, so make sure you get through this.
Is it all for the horse?
It doesn't matter. You won't be able to find it.
Self-assess. We're back.
Self-assess. It's May, we all passed.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
So if you go through it and you do have any questions, please let me know. We'll work on that next year. So anyway, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that is the official audit report.
She's frozen. She's a little perspicacious.
So as we started January, happy January, everyone. And I'm going to do just a brief overview to set some context as we think about budgeting for this year. It's not going to be enough context, but it'll be general context to provide some.
Hold on. There you go. It's all right. This is everywhere.
Teach a man to fish. My dad said.
You what?
Teach a man to fish.
Let me see.
So as you think about providing some context for where we are now, we're going to look briefly into the last year, and then Amy will be able to get into more detail. I think our reality is, every year, you know, that I've been in those county schools, Mr. Hocknessman used to say, you know, we don't know much this January. Amy's going to say something similar to that. The truth is, we don't. And especially with the new governor taking the role, it's, they're even more potentially up in the air. We can't take anything for granted, and I think Amy does a great job of making sure we don't take anything for granted in the process. So as you think about our competition across the district, and we'll continue to come back to these priorities broadly, these are things that don't easily play out in a process. Much of our work as students is centered around this, and we're still continuing to detail and define what it means to be a student in our school, and it's a major priority for us over the next six months. What we do feel strongly about is our belief that every student in our district is gifted, and it's our job to ensure we create experiences that excavate those gifts. So I'd say there's no better investment in our money than the way our money is being spent in terms of our purpose. So one of the things I talked about briefly in November, December was a priority compass. And these are, this is really my priority compass for the work that I'm doing, and the work that we're talking about in terms of financial planning really fits into this annual strategic planning process, which is something I think, after going through a full year with you as a team last year, the annual strategic planning process is something that I want to continue to develop, so you can put a lot of attention in developing that and giving you more clarity as a team, because I can see that process a lot more clearly at this point because of the year that we had. So this is, you're going to continue to hear this come up. You also have the gift box in front of you, and while that just seems like a symbol, it really does drive a lot of our conversations that we're having at the district level, and continues to allow us to think about, are we allocating resources to generate experiences for kids that meet this? This is the last time we talked about finances, was in September. Last time we really talked about it. So I bring you back to this because in September, we were talking about significant increase of property values equals less funding. We talked about significant decrease in seat funding. We talked about increase in local assessment offset by not just seat, but our contributions to local capital outlet funds that ended up really decreasing our overall general fund this year, and we're really still waiting to see how all that plays out because we're still bringing in revenues and don't fully know even how this year is going to play out. So with that said, it looks like it's going to be the exact same message for next year. Significant increases in property values, significant decrease in seat funding, increase in local assessment offset by seat funding. We can probably predict in September, the same lines will be, in fact, the numbers may even, we may even only barely have to change the number because of the conversations we've been having with our local PDA and analyzing what's to come with property assessments across Nelson County. This is also part of that conversation. We've had a total flop in the way we've been funded through local versus state revenues. This is summary of last year. We can project that next year, this will set at 6 million dollars. That's a pretty safe bet. So again, with all that said, we've continued to make decisions that really allow us to think about students. Last year, there were a number of commitments that we made that got us to where we are today. So while the carry forward last year that was reported in there was just about 3.6 million in our audit, we don't expect to carry 3.6 million forward this year, partly because of some of the commitments we made to these pieces here. So teacher leadership, student leadership, school backpack leaders, workforce development, K-2 literacy, early literacy. In fact, this was the overall increase, and if you look at the monthly financial review process, this is pretty much overall par to be is around $800,000, which was the original projection. So with that said, we did that, we made that commitment as a board, you made that commitment as a board because we believe it's an important time to continue to give momentum to people in our district. I'm reminding you of this now really because that's kind of what leads us to this conversation today around thinking about budgeting for next year and some of the forces at play, especially as we look at this reality staying true. So with that said, we know that we're still committed to the same things. They're not going away. We're still committed to thinking about how we continue to build community partnerships in industry, in our schools, to share resources and build upon the intelligence of our community. We continue to think about how we help in our schools use the money that we have and that we use the money we have to budget for future ready resources. This is a huge priority for us. We have a vision that will continue to come to life even more acutely over the next six months, and I think this is a part of the conversation you all saw last year with pride teams. You'll see that come into life in really, I think, a more broad way over the course of the next five months as we come back to the table to determine this. So I say that we're going to be talking about money at the end of the day, regardless of the amount of money that we are allocated from the state and how much we're able to generate through local property assessments, regardless of that, we still have the capacity to do great work, and we will continue to be committed to these pieces of the puzzle as we work together. So with that, Amy will talk through this timeline, knowing we won't know exactly where we're at until March of 2022. So even this year, we won't know where we stand until March for the current year we're in.
So what is on that on the compass? Sorry. I can't put my. So now we just slide it along. And then that. Right. There you go. So I also have a compass, and my priorities have been focused on student-centered resource alignment, ethical and legal alignment, and caretaking, empowered caretaking, and this is really about how we care for our staff, and these are the things that we have to worry about. But this is where our focus has been, about making sure that our resources are truly allocated to the priorities of the district. And so the fiscal year 2021 budget cycle is how we're actually going to start this year, and we'll continue to build on it through the year rather than having a new presentation when we get to the tentative budget and a new one when we get to the working budget. We will start with this one, and we'll just keep adding to it throughout the year so that we can also go back and look and see where we were. So I think I can click after that. I just put it in there. So this is where our budget cycle starts, in January 2020 with the draft budget, and this is the progression that we're going to see as we go all the way through the 2021 budget cycle. In February, we'll go into tentative allocations, we'll go all the way down through our personnel notifications, and then our tentative budget, but we don't actually get our first forecast in seat dollars until June, and that's based on the information that we have, not any actual data. We won't have assessments by then. The final ADA numbers will have been calculated, but other than that, it will just be a forecast. We won't receive our first assessments until the end of July, possibly even beginning of August, and so until a working budget, we don't actually have any concrete numbers that we're budgeting on, but more than it's all estimates and projections and educated guesses, but still.
And then we talked a little bit about potentially, one of the conversations we've had around salary schedules, while we typically would like to approve that in March, we may not even have enough information this year to approve that in March based on potential decrease in seat, and not knowing our still spirits tax, we may have to set back to April. So that is part of that. That's a unique occurrence because of the drastic decrease in seat allotment because of our property assessment.
When we approved the working budget, we're still even going on the tentative seat funding. We don't get the final until March, which is based on growth factors, so we estimate until then as well as we can, and that's when we finally get it, which is at the end of the year. So you're not actually getting all the data you need until the end of the year in which you're in. So the draft budget is presented in January only because it's required. The law states that we have to present a detailed list of revenues expenditures in the month of January, not for approval for information purposes. And although I understand the point of that, we're giving you data based on very little information. So the numbers that we give you really are not very valuable in that essence, but what is valuable is the things that we know that we can expect, and knowing what we don't know actually does help us. So we know that our step increases each year cost us approximately 250,000. Doing nothing else with our salary schedule, our salaries will go up about 250,000. And with the CERS rates increasing, and we've already received those new rates for next year, we know that our CERS increase across the district will cost us about $175,000. Based on conversations that we've had with our PDA, we are expecting an assessment increase this year very similar to what happened last year. That's not guaranteed, but we've been told that that's what it's looking like. Because of that, we know to expect that our state seat revenue will decrease drastically again. Last year, our additional amount that we had to put towards the FSBK fund was 425,000. Assuming that this happens again, which is what we're expecting, we would have an additional contribution of 425 to 450,000 to FSBK beyond what we normally have.
And I think what that means is we can't spend towards any capital outlet, and that takes directly from general state just as well.
If I can real quick, on that topic, and not for tonight, but for sometime in this, I'll call it the first half of this calendar year or the last half of the year, could we get something that kind of shows us what our blocking capacity is?
I have a meeting scheduled on the 23rd with Lincoln Steinhardt to update us on the blocking capacity.
Yeah, because I know that there was the work that Ms. Breeding and the rest of the local planning committee did last, I think, and where we identified facility needs.
And I do have, I have a meeting already scheduled with him to look over that, and then at the board meeting, we will have an SSBC offer for you to approve that just came through for a small amount of dollars.
Well, and I know we've got a lot of needs there, and I'm not saying, well, as soon as we have some blocking capacity we need to spend it, but also I like the approach that Superintendent Elliott's taken, which is we don't need to be thinking about just the next four years, a normal facility plan, but thinking five to eight years out, and maybe that can give us some ideas of these, we've got critical needs and when we can start into things during that.
There are things we don't know. The legislative session started today, and typically in a budget year, although we love for them to make the decisions in January and in February, typically we find that the majority of the decisions are made in April or at the very end of March, which means I didn't give you the draft budget, and I don't even know what they're going to mandate. As you know, there's been mental health and safety requirements that went into effect last year that they stated that they would discuss during this budget season on how they would help schools fund this. The other thing that I'm sure you've heard on the news is talks about mandated pay raises. Other mandates are always something that happens. So right now, there are additional expenses that we could have. There could be additional funding, likely, I don't know, but that's the fact is that we don't know. So the numbers I'm getting ready to give you, just understand that they are, take them for what they are. Okay, so we are going to look at this very similar to what happened last year. In the event that the property assessments increase the way that we've been told that they're going to again, we can expect that the general fund will only see a very small amount of the total tax revenue increase. Last year, it ended up being about 450,000. I'm currently showing it at 600,000 just because our distilled spirits have tended to go up. But what we do expect to happen as well is that our seat revenue is going to drop by another million dollars. So we will not have a million dollar increase because a large portion of that will go to FSBK, but we will have a million dollar decrease, which will result in another decrease in our general fund budget. This is something that even though these are not hard and fast numbers yet, that we can expect and we do need to plan for. Our other income is not expected to change much, so overall, though, we do need to expect that we're going to have a slight decrease in funding.
And of course, all that's based upon the taking the 4% revenue increase and then the exaggerations.
It is. And of course, last year, that meant that we dropped the tax rates. The hope would be that that would be what, if the assessments increase at the rate that we have been told they would, that that would likely happen, yes.
Which is the per $100 rate.
Yes. Okay. So for expenses, right now, we can't estimate a lot of decrease in expenses. Our salary, what we allocated to schools, we had stated that we were going to commit to that for several years as far as the staffing that we've allocated. We do know that we'll have a slight increase in costs for steps and CERS rate increases. We do not expect our non-salaried expenses to change much, although we didn't purchase buses this year, and we will have to add those into the budget next year. This is an area where we would be able to use some of those capital outlet funds, and so we are watching as those expenses come through to think, how can we utilize those funds, given that they're no longer available for us to use in the general fund? So you will start seeing some of those capital funds request as we find expenses that we can use those funds for. So overall, this is just showing you about what we're spending this year. The one area that has decreased is the nursing services, and that's because after a review, they are now covering more of that nursing contract than they were getting. But everything else is very, very similar to what it is this year, but again, it's, there's not much information I can give you at this point.
Real quick, what did that from what? It decreased nursing services?
I believe we were close to 260,000.
That was a pretty significant jump.
From a 70% to a 40%. And it actually decreased, they decreased at halfway through this year for us. So next month, our portion will be about 50% off.
This is the work started three years ago with Tom? Was it two years ago? So their promises have, I think, come true and continues to provide.
And this is a nurse at every school, just so that you can be aware of that when we're talking that amount of money, that's a nurse at every school, and I'm sure that they'll go into it further on, but these, this was the numbers that I could at least provide you of the estimate. So we understand that there's going to be some significant challenges when we create the budget this year, but we also recognize that the commitments that were made to our schools and to our district, we have to uphold, so we're going to be looking even harder for ways that we can reallocate funds. The good thing is, we know in advance this time. Last year, it kind of hit. Last year kind of hit us when we had a much higher assessment than what we were projected when they first gave us that information. And so that was when we had decided that rather than adjust the budget, we were going to stick with it and just allow our carry forward to, to help cover those costs last year or this year. This year, we're starting well in advance. And as we move through the next couple of months and the decisions that will make, we'll be keeping this in mind as well. So do you have any questions?
Good job, Amy. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ready for one of these?
Okay. So we're not going to open up each of these. You will be asked to approve this at the board meeting. There are certain things that because of the amount that we spend as a district that we should be putting out to bid every year. And so I just want you to get used to the idea that this is going to be something that's on the board agenda every year. There will be a few of these that we can do multiple year bids. For instance, our medical services, we're hoping that's not something that we have to bid every year. Our beverage is something we're hoping not to bid every year. But basically, the, the request at the board meeting will be that you approve us to advertise these bids. And our hope is, of course, that as we advertise that we get the best possible price that we can for the district for next full year. And it will be an annual thing after this. There's a couple that are missing as far as the drafts, but they'll be available before the, the board meeting. It's been a lot of packets from there. Do you have any questions on that? All right. The Booster Club approval is this. A couple of years ago, a decision was made based on several changes to the Red Book that it might be better and some issues that we were having with Booster Clubs, that it would be better to do away with the official Booster Club and move those accounts into our school accounts. And although that definitely served the purpose that it had at that time, there's been some additional changes to the Red Book that has made it difficult for some of these groups to support the schools in the way that they're hoping to. Mainly, one of the big changes that has recently happened is that previously, money could be swept to the district to use for things that were considered operational as long as students didn't generate it. Well, they've changed the definition to student generated to student and parent generated now. So if parents and teachers are joining together to do a fundraiser now, it now has to stay at school in the event that it's raised in that manner. Oftentimes, our Booster Clubs are trying to do things to support the district, to support the school as a whole. They might be raising for a new computer lab or some other operational thing that's going to benefit the school, but they can't spend the money in selectivity funds on that. And we have a lot of groups that have expressed interest in going back to a Booster Club option. Our schools have not been interested, and we're not talking about athletic Booster Clubs at this point. What I'm requesting, and this will be on the, at the board meeting, what I'm requesting is that each school be allowed to have a PTA or a PTO organization only. Differences in the way we handled this this time is they will be required to sign a Booster Club agreement, and they will go through an annual verification process to make sure that they're turning in the paperwork that they are required to continue to support the district. That will give our schools some opportunities to do some things that they haven't been able to do through the school activity funds, and it will, it will allow our parents to get back into participating in things that they haven't been able to do right now. So this will be a change on what you've approved in the past, but that is what we will be asking for. And we've had several schools already reach out to us about this.
About eight years ago, January, about eight years ago.
I need some examples.
Yeah, we need examples.
Examples of that, like right now, a school, a school PTA wants to spend money on-
So we've had, I had a school that they wanted, their intention that they did their fundraisers for was to purchase more phone books. It is an elementary school. They're not completely, their younger kids do not have phone books yet. They can't buy those out of selectivity funds. And you can't sweep money if it's been generated by students or parents. So they'll do a fall fundraiser, which is typically teacher and parent generated, and they will not be allowed to use those for complex because you cannot buy operational or technology out of selectivity funds.
So going with a PTA or O at the school, which would then allow them to keep a separate account of the funds, would then allow them to make that purchase and then-
They can either make the purchase or they can donate to the school. The difference is if they donate it for that purpose, we can then use it at the district level to, for that purpose. We just can't do that, allow them to do it and get started in the school account instead.
Well, in Booster Clubs, I mean, whether we're talking about this type of a Booster Club, PTA, PTO, or the athletic Booster Clubs, or arts Booster Clubs, I mean, they're critical to help support financially and in other ways, the groups we've got. But the only things that I would ask, and it may be within the agreement that's on the link, is, so like, is there a set of guidelines and/or requirements whenever it comes to the financial handling of the fund?
So considering the fact that a Booster Club is actually not part of the school district, they are a separate organization. They have the laws within the Red Book that still, they're still mandated, but they're responsible for their own tax returns, they're responsible for their own tax exemption number and all those things. In the Booster Club agreement, and also attached to it is the dates. They do have to provide us lists of their officers. They have to provide us a list of their expenditures and revenues anytime we request it, but we've asked them, a minimum will be once a year, but we are allowed to request it at any time. And so those things are going to be in the agreement that they have to continue to abide this. Now, we have had a conversation with the schools. They do not want it to go beyond the PTA, PTO. Nobody at this point wants to do that, and I think that that is a safe place to start. Nobody wants to open it up to athletics at this point or anything like this, and this would be just the PTA, PTO. And if we have followed where they weren't following through, we can come back through and say, I'm sorry, you're not.
Well, I know eight years ago, some of the reasons for the change at the time did have to do with the Red Book changes, but also, and it's like a pendulum clock, you know, it can swing from one extreme to the other. I know there also have been, and there continues to be every now and then issues where a Booster Club, a person involved in the Booster Club had misappropriated funds. And that can happen in any organization. It's not just Booster Clubs. But I know that was also one of the things that at the time the board had a concern with, is making sure that we protect the hard work of the entire group from one potential person. Not again saying that anybody would do it, we always hope to do it.
Some of the challenges we're currently facing is when those were done away with and moved into the school accounts, we have people that still think they're PTAs and PTOs. But the truth is, once we move them into the school accounts, they're not. And you can't have a parent running the accounts down. You have to have a school representative. And so these parents are thinking that they're raising all this money and they get to do with what they want, but a parent can't send school district money. Only the school district can. And so there's been a lot of challenges, especially recently, with them going, oh, well, we, we're allowed to do this. No, the Red Book says that we can't do that. The Red Book says we cannot spend money on that. Well, that's what it was raised for. I understand that, but the Red Book says that we can't.
Well, and hopefully, the way I was asking or stating what I was getting at here is that we just, we would want to make sure that there's some safeguard in place. You know, everything from the two signatures required on checks to, you know, multiple people counting cash. And I bring those up because I know there have been some instances in Kentucky where there was a bookkeeper who was single counting it and then not recording it and-
We unfortunately can't mandate that. A Booster Club would be a separate organization. We are not legally allowed, like, we can have them sign an agreement that says that they understand that this is what they're bound by. They also are bound by Red Book. But we can't give them a financial packet that says that they have to do-
So, which, which I can understand that, and definitely can be fine with that. I just, I want to make sure that the school buildings, if this were to be approved, that the school buildings and their engagement with those PTO, PTA organizations, understand that there needs to be a level of oversight because-
And that is something that we can do. So we can provide guidance to each of our schools, not only on what's in the Booster Club agreement, what they're required to turn in. And that is why in the agreement, in this, it would be that they have to go through this annual verification process. If they are not going through this annual verification process, then they cannot continue.
Where do you verify?
So first of all, the Booster Club agreement specifies the things that they're required to do. I've also provided some dates, on dates that they're required to get certain information by. And so it's basically their financial, we have to have their financial statements every year. We have to have a list of their officers every year. We have to have copies of their liability insurance, those types of things. And so we'll be verifying that they have turned, submitted all the documentation that they're supposed to submit, when they're supposed to submit it, so that, because getting that documentation is what prevents the opportunity from those types of things.
And I'm not wanting us to be in control, and when I say that, I'm talking about the school district, not the board. You know, the school district being in control of the funds that those groups have worked hard to raise, you know, they need to be able to have that control of it. I also, at the same time, I want to make sure that the hard work of the collective group, that people understand that there needs to be some safeguard in place so that one person potentially couldn't destroy the hard work of that entire group. Because I've been involved in some outside of school organizations before where one person took the money out of the group and they used it for whatever, it came down to lawsuits and criminal action, and eventually the money was gotten back, but that put a damp on the hard work of people.
And one of the things we can do is actually require them to come to training area.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
So one of the things we can help with is requiring them to actually come to a Red Book training.
So let's just make it harder for the people that are already volunteering all their time.
Yes. I would, I would say some districts, I don't know of any other districts that completely don't have any Booster Clubs or PTAs, or at least the PTA, PTO portion. I know that there's some that have done joint ones. But the purpose of a Booster Club is to support our schools and to support our students. We have a lot of parents that really want to be involved, but the restrictions under the school activity funds make it very difficult for them to do that. And we have principals that are very-
So how is this giving more freedom? How is it not being more restrictive?
This actually is giving them the freedom to raise money and do these things for what they're wanting to do it for. Instead of right now, we're restricting it because you can only raise for this business.
Yeah, so if they were, if a winter festival or whatever it might be was going to raise the goal of $30,000 for three classrooms of Chromebooks. Under the current approach, that would not be able to occur. However, if it was a separate outside PTO, PTA organization, they could identify that goal, they could then possibly meet that goal, and then they could say, here's the check for $30,000 such as a school to buy the Chromebook.
I've seen a, I've seen a PTA raise money for a new awning to cover kids when they're going out to the bus. I've seen PTAs build new bus stopships. Those are things that they can't do at selectivity funds. It restricts them on what they're currently allowed to do through the selectivity.
To me, this is a good approach to be able to give that flexibility, because the Red Book does have such restrictions and, you know, that sweeping of the funds and how they can be used, it does kind of tie the hands of those groups. And so I'm, I'm convinced for this, it's just I want to make sure that somehow, I guess we have a, I don't want to say a feel-good, because that doesn't hold up in court of law, but I mean, I've seen too many instances over the past couple of years of situations where it was that one person that nobody ever would have thought they would have done that. And I just want to make sure that those groups have something that they can have their own oversight to make sure that doesn't happen to them.
And they are, and they are supposed to have bylaws and stuff. I would say that the parents who are participating in these have contacted me about concerns about the inability to do what they're trying to do. No school would be required to have one. This wouldn't be, oh, yours is operating great within your school activity funds, it's meeting all the needs, but you have to do this. This would be for the schools that wanted to do it this way because they want to be able to support it in a different way. It's not a mandate.
So let's say there's, there's an individual who's on the PTO that, and I'm not talking about making, you know, little, small financial errors just as an error, but I mean, they're deliberate and, you know, maybe not so ethical.
The period.
Yeah. How, what's our liability?
We have none.
We have no liability at all.
None, because they're a separate entity. They have their own tax ID number. That being said, obviously, with our kids, which is why we're trying with the Booster Club agreement and making sure we're doing verifications, our actual legal liability would be none.
But the money that was, the two to three incidents just in the last couple of years, wasn't caught through this Red Book bill. It was caught in the office, in the assembly, and so on. This had nothing to do with, just like to know, this had nothing to do with Red Book money or any of that PTO, PTA.
And we still do have one. So there, we have no PTAs right now. It's important to understand that you can't be a PTA and have money in the district. So we don't have any-
That was done by something else.
We don't have any. We do have, we have one, at one school, that still have one.
So this decision was made about eight years ago, and it was not an official policy shift. It was just a shift. The Red Book shifted, and at the time, Tim said, there are probably going to be these requirements. And he was right. So there was one that made, that was able to stand, and that was Boston School. And the reason at the time was because they were generating so much revenue through the Oyster Center and otherwise, that they maintained their standing, and they have continued to maintain until it's-
Still are.
It's still-
It's on to the government's share right now.
Serious, are. So I think there's a couple of pieces I just wanted to remind, and every one of us, part of these, not everyone would have one. Let's start with that. Two, the principal of the school that would be essentially collaborating with this group, we can assume is going to be effective in that collaboration. And the more stability that we have in our schools and the more growth we have in our schools, the stronger these opportunities are going to become. And that's why they're coming for you today. The more of this right here that we do, the more people begin to see opportunities for this. The work that Laura has been leading with Workforce, the more that generates connections and value, the more of this is becoming, going to become a reality. And that's just something to remember. This is really a byproduct of what I would say is growth, of growth in belief in our school. And will continue, and hopefully it becomes a good problem because we have so much belief in our schools that we want to have more and more people seeking to support them. This is, think about our, well, since I've been in the role for 20 months, the number one priority is united people to come together to care for our schools, not to cry. This is a byproduct of that.
Well, years ago, we have always had a PTA or a PTO in every school in this county until things started to crumble and new legislation took over, this Red Book started, and they've always been able to, like Boston, prime example, they earn money to do things only for school, like Chromebooks or kitchen equipment or whatever. It always has been. But, but the people, the schools that have been caught with their hand in the till had nothing to do with this. This is just a, this is just, to me, it's just a different way to, to earn money, to get money, to help your school out. I guess because we were raised in Boston, and that's how we did it.
So what gives us the authority? Is it under the Red Book that these Booster Club agreements are-
The Booster Club agreement is actually from KDE, but the Red Book requires that a board approve any external group to support the district because they're using our names. Because they would be earning money in the name of Coxas Creek Elementary or Blimfield Middle School, you then have to approve their, their ability to support that. The Booster Club agreement was actually drawn up by KDE. It's not a requirement. And we are only allowed to require them to sign it if you guys say so. So we cannot, I can't just say, hey, in order to be a Booster Club, you have to sign this. You have to say that in order to be a Booster Club for our district, you have to sign this.
Which is just another stage call.
It's just, and the Booster Club agreement is designed basically to say, this is what we expect from you as a supporter of our school using our-
Do we have the authority to resolve this?
I have a question for Chip on this.
Yeah, I don't-
What is, by, by, okay, it's voluntary, but now, as a board, we're going to ask them to sign these Booster Club agreements for where before we have no liability, does this shift any liability to us?
I have to see the agreement.
Okay. Before the next, before we vote on this, I want your opinion on if this shifts any liability to us.
I will say that the other, that the idea of the Booster Club agreement, I do have a copy up there and it is attached, is basically to get the Booster Club to understand that as a Booster Club, these are the things that we expect. You must realize that we are bound by laws for title mine. And therefore, if we ask questions of you, you are responsible for giving us that data. If we ask for a list of expenses, you are required to give us that data. Because they are earning money in the name of our schools- Because they are earning money in the name of our schools and in the name of our students, that is the design of this. And this was provided by KDE and is used across the state by schools.
So Rebecca, is your concern with the booster club agreement that if signing it versus not signing it at all, where if they've signed it, then because they're in an agreement with the district, then, then it becomes a liability versus if they're, you know, just an organization on their own, doing their own thing, then we're not considered liable for it because our name is really technically is not attached to it through the agreement.
Right. And going back some bit to what you said this time about putting more requirements on already, the only reason that I was bringing that up, I know back again eight years ago, one of the concerns was because there is so much financial accounting required of any sort of group, football booster, basketball booster, PTO booster group or whatever, that did we want to have a parent who already was very strapped for time and just wanted to help, have to deal with lots of requirements of how do I need to show accounting, how do I need to keep this information, which is why I was getting to, are we going, would there be something that we could do to help them to understand? Because most parents are not, are not Amy Owens and financial accounting wizards. Most parents are, I'm just working to make sure my kid has good experience at school and I can put together spreadsheet, is that what I need to do? That's where I was getting at.
I will say we've had some parents that are already operating under the fact that their PTA group school activity fund and already keeping track of that stuff. So it's, they're already doing the work. They're just having extra rules because they have to do it within the restrictions that we place on them as a school.
I just look at that, there are things from our knowledge that we can share with them and say, here's how you can be better organized in your separate PTO, PTA group.
I've actually been contacted also by the Kentucky PTA president and what they do to help support these organizations as well. They've been in contact with the state on the Red Book as well. They've also been in contact with me on some of the concerns that we're having because of the fact that they're out looking for schools at this time. So I've, I've been in contact with a lot of those people and they do provide a lot of training and guidance at the state level of PTA to support these groups.
And that clarity there, that helps me feel a whole lot better that there's a new organization that can help.
Oh, absolutely. Anytime there's a question, there's an email list, you send it, everybody in the day gets a question, you ask it and they come back in and they, you know, it's there. I mean, it just.
It's the underground network of people that help each other.
Well, no, it means out there, you know, they have to follow the Red Book, everybody knows it. And nothing gets done until you check that and you go through it and you look at the series, you know what you're talking about, you gotta do it, you know.
If you have any, I'll give Chip a copy of the booster club agreement. If you think of any other questions that you have before the board meeting, if you want to email them to me and I'll make sure that I have that information for you. The booster club agreement is there plus the spreadsheet that I give them that reminds them what dates the things are due. And again, this will be, if, if you decide before the board meeting that we need another month and more information, you just let me know what information you need and I'll make sure.
If this goes through, I'd like to see the communication plan of how this is going to be communicated to our volunteers.
You mentioned that we have the ability to resolve any, but I don't see anything that the board has the ability.
Red Book gets you the ability to resolve it. And the reason is, is because they are operating in the name of the school district, you have the right to therefore say you no longer like to operate in the name of the school district. They could be an organization, but they can't raise money in the name of Cox's Creek Elementary now it's not a school district.
That makes sense.
Let's be honest, if you're somebody who's giving and you're wanting to give to a school organization, if you're telling that you're raising for Cox's Creek Elementary, I might give, but if you say, oh, we're the parent group of East Nelson, then it's going to raise some questions. So they would no longer have the ability to raise and, and earn and support in that way.
We can add it if you think. If you want to add.
Yes, and, and we can.
That's the best person.
Surprise.
Do you have any more questions? I'll let.
Okay, so I'm coming to you tonight to actually ask for approval to be able to go ahead and move forward. So we will make a motion at the end of this. So the first, or a motion.
Oh, no, I was, that's the first.
So I'll start with the caretaking compass and the work that really I am involved with. And it starts with the culture of care is being one of my priorities, the caregiving experiences that we have in our district and then the care collaboration, how we work together to create these experiences for our kids. And so we talk about the experiences that our kids have at the academy. Really it's revolving around this right here, this community-centered care system. These are some of our most vulnerable kids and also the ones I'm going to talk about today as we talk about the inclusion of a day treatment. So one of our populations at the academy is our Icarus population and it is our student body that really has demonstrated heavy trauma in their lives. And so we provide a real focus on the three things, restorative caretaking, which shows them how to make amends to anything that they've done to harm other individuals or themselves. Mental health and caring for their needs is really what we're going to target tonight. And then the academic care, what experiences they have to be instructed and to gain in their, the gifts that they have to offer. And so if you'll go to the next one, we're going to focus on that mental health program. So we offer intensive therapy to care for our kids at the academy in the Icarus program. And we, for the most part, already offer a lot of these things, but in order to offer more, we need to revise our contract with them, Astra approaches approached us to see if we would add the word day treatment in the contract because it will allow them to increase their services. One being, well, let me just go through it. What is a day treatment? It serves our kids in the Icarus program under 21. It provides the individual and group and family. So right now we provide an individual and group therapeutic services, but we don't provide family. But a day treatment will allow us, if we word it like that, we can provide family services, which eliminates the barriers for our parents saying they can't get to a clinic, they come here to the school. Also we need behavior management and social skills training. So they are willing, this is in the deliverables I believe, is to add a therapist in order to offer this so that we can push into classrooms, so that it's not just a group or individual type of experience that they're having, that they're in the classroom and they're learning to cope because our end goal for all these is really transition back to our company and control. Also the additional therapist will allow us to, when a kid comes to us and they're with us and they're really showing momentum and moving forward, they're having, gaining some coping mechanisms, we got to transition them back. We need assistance to transition them back. I mean, therapists working together and going to our other school to say, here's how we can work, this is how, what it looks like in the classroom for a kid to be successful. Independent living skills, they offer, so the difference right now is we do not have, so offer during school and during breaks. Right now we have school hours, but during our breaks, a day treatment would allow us to continue services to these kids. Otherwise there will be a gap in their treatment service, they have to go to the clinic. And ideally their families would take them to the clinic, but we do see that that is a barrier and that in the past it has led to a break in services. And so it does not help us a lot when we don't offer services here. And then the structured collaboration, for high day treatment, you have to have the therapeutic and the instructional piece. So Astra is recommending that we add the word day treatment to continue to identify barriers, monitor student progress, support success. And their deliverables are these, that we will offer twice daily group therapy sessions for the students, daily individual for students that allow us to push in with the classroom coping mechanisms, the family therapeutic sessions, additional staff members, right now they're talking to one to two therapists that they can add, which is a huge benefit to us, it's unbelievable. An onsite, one of those persons would be an onsite program director to help us reach their immediate needs. And medical management, so they've started doing this even this semester, but their nurse practitioners are coming onsite to deal with the medical management or their medicine management because again, that's another break that we see and a barrier to parents, they're not going to the clinics to get their information, their prescriptions filled, but if we can do it here, parents seem to come here. They won't often go to the clinics for one reason or another. And then collateral services means that our school works hand in hand with our therapist and they really are still overseen by our principal and our program that we've developed. And this is in order really to maximize our students' day function and this is all at no cost to us. So really you think, well, how can they do all this? If you think about the benefits of the Medicaid funding for school health, that's where we're getting some of these benefits. So tonight I'm really asking for approval that we revise the contract that includes the word day treatment. And so the revised contract is on there as well as this agreement.
So Astra then is going about building Medicaid to be able to fund the program.
Yes, so they can build for more services and thus we get more services.
And is day, so truly it is those two words, day treatment. So we're then saying that we have a day treatment program.
Yep.
At the Horizon Academy, by doing so, that allows those additional services to be able to be offered and able to be built in Medicaid.
Right, yeah.
So what do we do with the, with the students who don't qualify for?
So we have made an agreement with Astra that, and we also have a licensed social worker on staff over there and so she sees some of the kids for individual, but Astra is actually, because we're able to create a program like this, if we're in Icarus or think of here in a K2 room and you know you're doing a group for K2, they are not pushing out that kid as long as the parent consents to be a part of the group and maintains confidentiality, they'll put that kid on the group. And that's Astra just doing us a, like a favor, you know, a solid, really the same because when we agreed to get into kind of a contract with them, we mentioned our kids on private insurance. But we really, in the Icarus program, we very rarely have a kid on private insurance, but it does happen and they said, we will take them on.
Awesome.
And of course the relationship we've got with Cumberland Family Medical, did I say that wrong? Okay, because I saw the piece about the medication piece, I mean, there's, there's not going to be issues with the two of them working together across town.
Right, yeah. So they, family, Cumberland Family Medical comes and sees what our physical issues happens, but Astra sees our therapeutic. And Cumberland Family Medical does say that they have a behavioral piece, but they don't have anybody in this area that does that work.
Well, we've had good relationships with Astra for quite a while.
Right, yeah. And both Cumberland, I mean, they all bypass each other and they're all working together at this point, so yeah. Any other questions?
Go ahead, motion.
Yeah, it does have to work.
I'll make a motion to approve. I mean, what we're doing is we're changing the terminology and changing the terminology allows them to build additional ICD-10 codes through Medicaid that will be paid. That's all this is about, it's about ICD-10 codes and having had the right words in there in the treatment.
Really it's about making sure the kids got access.
The kids get access. This does nothing but benefit us, doesn't cost us anything. Costs us nothing, helps a, a business partner that's a great benefit to our school. Maybe they make a little more money and they're clearly taking that money and giving it back to us. So I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
You have a second, I'll approve.
Both?
Thank you, they're excited about this.
I am too, it's great, thank you, thank them for us.
I like the part there's no break in it. You want to get a part of the service. That's why I heard. In the summer and during, when you go three months without a year. That's huge. It's a barrier to our families.
That's exactly what I did.
He started rallying off the boat, didn't he?
Well, that's what it's doing, that's what it says.
You have some video camera.
I was going to say, please, you claim it. I got to rub it.
This is the next one.
Thank you, sir. So what I will be discussing this evening falls under the safety standards portion of the caretaking compass and in particularly about security cameras. So we will go through that.
Good to see you up there, BJ, I haven't seen you in a while.
I know. So if you recall in May of last year, I requested that you guys approved, the board would approve an application for a grant. The grant was about $334,000 to update and replace a lot of our security cameras and a portion of that also went with some of the security entries of key pads. We found out in October that we were not selected to receive that grant, which was a big disappointment. And in the meantime, there are some, some fixes that need to occur. And Ms. Owens earlier spoke about capital outlay funds, excuse me, capital funds. Hey, I'm learning something. And so I want to get into discussion about pursuing an avenue with some capital funds that we can mend the system that we have. First off, the purpose of having what, what we would be requesting would first get our camera systems on one system across the entire district. Currently we have several different, one school will have one, another one has another. We have seven schools that are on a program called Video Insight, which I prefer, it's easy to use, very user-friendly. It has remote access, so I can be at my home and I can see what's going on in Boston School as, excuse me, I can see what's going on in Cox's Creek, whereas Boston School, I would not have that access. Another good thing about Video Insight, it had one system for the entire district would be the capabilities of having our first responders have access to it. So central dispatch, which I forget, something that did have in one of our buildings, central dispatch could pull up right there in front of their screen and actually have live video feed of what was occurring. So if there was a fire in a room, they could say, help the firefighters, hey, there's a fire in this room and it's spreading to another room. And another benefit of having one system district-wide would be if we did have people move or leave the district. When we lost one of our tech individuals earlier this year, we lost a lot of knowledge. He knew a lot, he knew a lot about several different programs. Now we've lost that knowledge. With Video Insight, they have a huge company and no matter who's here, we could access information through them. Replacing equipment that has malfunctioned, was broken, currently across the district we have about 30 cameras that aren't functional. You may have some type of screen, but they're not at high quality, you may not be able to access. So replacing those broken cameras and having service installed to some other cameras that need to be linked into the school's individual system. Another priority for these cameras would be the coverage of every school's front entrance. Most of the time, if someone is going to turn to a school, it'd be a front entrance way. So that's, that's a priority for our district. And then finally covering some gaps due to some red line that says, you know, the academy has changed drastically and we now have several students in this basement and we also have a playground inside this building. And so we're asking for some funding that would cover the high need populations. The total cost in capital funds to get us to a point where we feel solid, it's not the great program that $334,000 would have given us, but it will give us something where I feel comfortable and confident that our kids are covered. Would be about $45,000 and it is very possible that about $5,000, maybe $6,000 of that dollars would subtract if we can get some sped funding that would be able to cover that.
Remember that $300,000 plus, that also included those cameras.
It also included around $2,000 for card readers in several buildings in several locations. Now I will say that we plan to apply for that grant again and if we get that grant this summer or late fall, whatever they, they do announce, we'll be able to use that to.
Yeah, it's just somebody looked at that and they go from $300,000 to now you're seeing you can do it for $45,000 because there's a whole lot more built into that other grant application. This was just a small component of that big.
And in this, so for instance, in the $334,000, that was asking for 90 brand-new cameras that do not exist currently. Now this is 30 cameras that do not exist. The $334,000. The $334,000 would cover replacing every single camera that we have in our district with a high-definition camera. Now, these are high-definition, they are high-quality cameras, that's why they cost a little bit more. Actually, the price has gone down since I wrote the grant. The cameras are coming down in price a little bit.
Yes, sir. Was there a reason why, or any feedback as to why we did not qualify for, or was there another district that did qualify?
So, another district in Kentucky did qualify, and got upwards of $300,000. And there were multiple across all 50 states, I believe, that received funding. We denied, maybe I...
Did we reach out to those districts and say, or why do you think you, did we reach out to those districts and say, why do you...
I believe that it will occur. I believe Mrs. Lee has been in contact with...
Did that today?
With, with the county.
With the county. They need all the help.
They're also the opportunity zone, and they qualified for substantial number of different ways.
But this won't put us on that system, will it?
This will.
Oh, this will?
This will.
Okay.
Absolutely will. And once everything would be installed, then our tech department, once we have everything installed and ready to go, my goal is to have our tech department go to NLL dispatch, NLL would dispatch, and install the program on their computers. That way, they have that access. I doubt that they would ever have needed, but in the event that they do, I would feel much more comfortable if they don't have that access.
Is there an app? Can you check it on your phone?
So, I, yes.
Check it out. And I noticed it says coverage for front entries.
Yes.
What's the cost for each every entry? I'm just wondering. I mean, it's great that we're going to do the fronts, but...
So, in the grant proposal of $334,000, that covered every single building in our district 360 degrees. This will not cover every building 360 degrees, because it will be close to $334,000 in that. They weren't going to give complete coverage. The $334,000 also covered athletic facilities, so if something happened on the football field in Combs, or baseball field in Dulce County, like, it would have high-quality coverage. I think just over the next few years, little by little, we can get 360-degree coverage at a minimum cost, other than what it's up to $34,000, maybe one or two every year, hitting those high points that we don't currently have.
Something like your building and system here that will be expanded upon, that would be consistent across the entire district.
Yes. And I feel confident in Video Insight. This past spring, they renovated their software, so they're going to pay a lot of money to renovate their software. I feel pretty confident that they are here for at least the next eight years, which is about the life of a camera.
I'm going to ask, in particular, the middle schools and the high schools, is this going to help? I mean, are we talking about all entrances, or just, as you said, just the fronts?
So, currently, there are very few entrances that aren't covered, especially in the interior. Now, there are exterior cameras that we are lacking in some spots, but as far as inside of a building at an entrance where someone comes into our building, I cannot think of, other than a camera that may be broken, I cannot think of any entrance that does not cover. And that's not to say there is not one, I do not know one right now.
You could provide an additional spreadsheet, so we don't have to actually communicate some of this out loud, keep conversing.
I don't want to know, I don't want to know what doors were or not. Does this come with a mobile option, meaning is there a drone option at all? That will, that will circle the schools and feed back into the system?
Like, are you talking about flying drones?
Right, yeah. That goes, that could do a 360 with one. I didn't know if this was, if this was something that they offered that we just couldn't afford, or if this company gets an offer for that.
I didn't know that.
Okay, I just wondered, because I just think that's super cool. And with our kids, how they are into technology and everything, the kids would probably think it was really cool.
I think, just something to BJ's credit, this is a culmination of really a year of analysis. The spreadsheet that he's put together is every camera in the district, and audit of that camera, the determination of what we need to do and not do with that camera, and...
And the location. Well, nobody needs that list but BJ, right, and you?
Well, we have it, and we have it, and we can share it with you, you can so...
I don't want it.
And I think the reality is, it's, this is a byproduct of BJ doing very thoughtful work, so.
One other question, you mentioned card reader. Are you talking about, and I forget the brand name, but I know some of the school districts I work with, as a visitor comes, it is the driver's license that is read. Is that the type of card reader you're talking about?
So, this card reader would be the key vault, so we have electric entrance. The idea there is to get away from keys.
Yeah. Okay. Back in the vault, the steel, I would do this in Kentucky, had a day that they spent talking about their different approaches. Some of them being that, some of them you have to swipe to exit a building as well as swipe to enter a building. And Justin Morgan was there that day, so he's probably got some good insight on that.
And these would have that capability to, actually, what we do, we can do that with what we have.
So, we were talking about capital outlay costs. When we actually did the budget this year, we had budgeted the portion, when he applied for this grant, we budgeted $75,000, which would have been our portion of the matching grant, with the understanding that we could then request capital funds to fund that. And so, based on what BJ is requesting, we do believe we can still use capital funds for that. So, when this is put on the board agenda in January, after it, we will also have a capital fund request that will be asked of you to approve, so that we can request capital funds to cover this cost. And typically, safety upgrades of any kind are applicable by capital funding.
And just in light of this, I think, with the reality of our seek reductions of restrictions, any opportunities we have to use capital funds for supplementary pieces over the next couple of years will be essential, because we cannot offset the loss in general fund. One thing we can do to support is use capital outlay when we have the opportunity to do so. So, that'll be something we continue to bring up as one way to offset some costs.
Well, in this case, since it sticks to the building, becomes part of the structure, that's what allows us to leverage the capital funding.
Yes, and typically, anything safety-related is allowed.
Well, the safety issue is what I'm concerned more about. Money, we can buy the money, it's just the safety of our kids that we need to think really hard on.
It's our job.
Yes, that's right. Thinking on, you know, it's our job to make sure they're safe.
I'll show BJ this. Mrs. Lee?
So, I am back with more requests to present, and applications.
You're pretty into the compasses, BJ hasn't really heard that.
Yes, yes. So, this is my compass, and you can see that it covers several things, and been working a lot on the shared leadership and strategic planning, which is toward maintenance, really what we have in grants, and setting the processes in place, so that there's a little more [inaudible] and we have systems there that, for the current existing programs, our back-to-back programs and new things, that we are keeping up with that. And also, you'll see working a little bit there with the future growth and [inaudible]. But as pertaining to grants, all of this is around resource streams and coming into community senior experiences for our students, because ultimately, that's what we're trying to do, is provide raw opportunities for our students, and in that future readiness concept. And so, that's where this is plugging in. And as part of this, one of the things we do in this office is we really look to our schools, what our needs are, and what we're seeing that needs to be funded, because there are funding opportunities that come upon, but they're not always a fit class, and they're not, they don't match to our needs, and you can put in a program, but if it doesn't really feel like something that matches your community where your students, you're not really gaining that much from it. And so, that's where this comes about. And we had an opportunity come up that was for an environmental education grant. And what that does is it, we applied for this [inaudible] school grant last month, and it's something that would be somewhat parallel to that, similar opportunities. And for us, we're looking at it as an opportunity for our workforce development, some of the large programs there, and it would foster student apprenticeships in environmental fields. Because one of the emphases for this grant is career development and awareness in environmental fields, and so, we're wanting to provide those proceeds. And our partner at this point is [inaudible] Opportunity Sound, because they have a lot of the [inaudible] programs there, and they have a horticulturist on board, and they're willing to work with us very much so. And that contributes toward the 25% match, which we also match with in high services. For example, there's an evaluation component, there's a grant, and so, you calculate an equivalency of time and effort, I can fill that, and [inaudible] is qualified to be an evaluator. And so, that's part of our match that we do for this, some of those actual cash dollars. And it also has a component of really looking at, we're putting environmental needs in this community, and so, we've done that, and I learned from that, we have a lot of issues with water here, and how the rates of contamination seals that happen contribute to the water quality issues, and so, we have to educate students about that, and teach [inaudible] gardens, and teaching students about conserving water and using quality water sources. And that's all for that. And it's for $100,000. So, I'm asking for your approval to submit the application for the Environmental Protection Agency Environmental Education Grant.
Motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
Yes, grant. Two seconds. All in favor?
And that makes 1.6 million we've applied for so far this year.
Thank you. Good job.
Just have some fingers crossed, you never know, but we'll see.
And we'll be glad.
That's right. That's what I will put on, we're going to have some of our ideas, and some of those, hopefully, will go well. And second is to accept the CASE grant, and what that is, is CASE is the curriculum that is used in our agriculture education programs, and so, there are considerable items that go along with that that are used annually, and the CASE company actually issues grants that can be, that schools can compete for, to provide those into the [inaudible]. And so, you approved this grant back in the fall, it was awarded for $1,000 for CASE materials, and I need to ask you to please consider accepting this grant as an award.
So, you approve this for [inaudible].
Motion.
David. Motion. Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do apologize for this, this late notice, or not late notice, but adding this to the agenda, but we did have a few schools that are going through the beta convention, that actually falls, I think we had a similar issue, because we don't have the working session in December because of the holidays and some other things. The convention actually falls like a day before our regular scheduled meeting in January, so we want you guys to go ahead and approve that, those overnight [inaudible].
I'll make a motion that we approve the overnight trips for the items, beta, basketball, and [inaudible].
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
Good job.
I wanted to show you my compass, but it was one night.
He's lost. He's lost. He doesn't have a stop.
That's how you read the first line. Say yes with comments.
We recommend a motion to adjourn.
The next one, we do have to read a motion. That's read aloud.
I will make a motion.
When we meet an executive session.
Yes.
Who's second?
How second?
I'd recommend a, at least read the whole.
Yeah.
Like, [inaudible].
Read it all.
The motion's [inaudible].
The motion.
Everything.
Read it. We need executive session per KRIS 61.8101K and KRIS 156.5576C for preliminary discussion of superintendent subject evaluation. And I have a motion, can I say? All in favor?
Hi.
And you oppose? Most likely. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Ready to beam?
There was no action.
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
See you in a couple Tuesdays. See how you do.